Recording of the Zoom.
Mark, we're recording. Oh, yeah, I see. We are recording. Okay, good. Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right. So then I feel more comfortable than moving us on, if that's possible. Okay, so it is my pleasure to call the Board of Education regular board meeting July 27, 2020, to order, and it's about 6:05. Now that I have done that, I realized in looking at our agenda that the public portion of this agenda was inadvertently left off. And in order, this is not a special meeting, so we can, if we have two-thirds vote, we can add that portion back into our regular board meeting. And remember, this is our time that we do hear information from members of our community. And so I would make a motion that we add that right before the student representative report. And so if people who are, kind of a second, Liz has seconded it.
Me.
Okay, thank you, Lee. All those in favor, please just raise your hand. And this is the motion to just add public comment. So it looks like we have full cooperation on that. So it has, so that will happen in a couple of seconds. Thank you very much, everyone. This is always the part that I never know how to run, but it's important to do the Pledge of Allegiance. And so I am just wondering, Beth, if you would be willing to do that. And it's going to sound kind of choppy because we're all going to say it at the same time. But if you can all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance.
Come on, Beth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Beth, for leading us. I appreciate that. Dr. Gwinir, I do not believe that this is the part that we have the recognition of visitors and participants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And so now?
We could do the comments. I knew Mike Whitney sent a note, and I have a note that he'd like to read a statement.
Yep, I do know that she's there. Mark, how do you and I, how are we going to work that? Do you know? Or am I just going to wait to see? Or maybe if you are someone who is in the community that has an interest in speaking, if you could please put that in the chat screen, then I would know how to, who is next. I do understand. And Fran, I heard your voice earlier before we started. Fran, I do know that you have an interest in speaking. Mark?
I have a lot of people that it's just their phone number. They hover over the camera. They can put their name in where their phone number is. It'll say rename. And we'll know who is who.
Okay. So if you're just on phone, then you're not going to be able to tell me in chat, are you? Oh, I'm smart that way, aren't I? All right. So people, we're just going to have to do the best that we can. So I'm just going to tell people that this is the portion of the meeting where we, the Board of Education, will receive comments from those in the citizen. All that we ask is that it pertains to the Town of Groton and to the education district. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less, and that before you speak, please state your name, your address. And that it's very important that you submit a transcript so that we can have that for the record. How's that for memorization, folks? Yes. All right. So if, Fran, if you can hear me, and if you would like to speak, I would like to offer the floor to you first.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Frances Whitney. I am at 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive in Mystic. And I appreciate that you guys gave me the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you very much. And thank you for your service. I hope you're all healthy and well. I know this year probably wasn't like anything you ever would have expected when you took on the job that you have. So thank you for what you're doing. It's been a very challenging year as a parent and an educator. I can tell you that. And I appreciate your time and your full consideration because there's a lot of...
Lots to plan. Oh, Fran.
And that will make sure it protects students, families, faculty, and staff around COVID-19 transmission in schools. The plan needs to include a minimum of six-foot for social distancing because that's the CDC criteria based on scientific data, and correct and consistent use of personal protective equipment by students and staff, meal services that meet state guidelines for restaurants, and frequent cleaning and sanitization. I'm thankful that there have been many fewer cases in COVID in our area since the spring, but I feel strongly that we cannot rely on rates to stay low into the fall. And we need a school plan that remains protective when cases increase again. Parents need complete details of Groton's plans for in-person distance learning in order to make informed decisions for their children and families. We received an email that said a plan has been made and that we will have it available soon. And I hope that's the case. And I have some questions that I'm hoping that plan will answer. And I'm just going to list those now. I also sent an email, I believe it went to all the Board of Education members, that is a longer version of this and with more details. And I'm hoping that everyone got that. And if not, I can certainly re-clip it. Some of the questions that I have that I think are important for us to know when we make decisions are, is there a plan for testing students or adult in the building prior to the reopening and at checkpoints throughout the year? Will masks with at least two or preferably three layers be provided to students and teachers throughout the year? And then will there be training to make sure everyone wears masks properly? What are the plans for people who can't wear masks? Is the six-foot distancing going to be required in school buildings and on school grounds? What about eating and drinking and meal services? Because people can't do that with masks. Will there be tests, and adjustments made to school ventilation systems to ensure the air quality and rapid air exchange? Have the ventilation problems at Northeast Academy been fixed, and do they cause particular problems for students and staff? What are the plans for areas and activities outside of classrooms, including movement through halls, restrooms, physical education, recess, and class transitions? Will the students actually be able to acquire and maintain access to safe hand sanitizers and disinfectants that are proven effective against the virus that causes COVID-19? I wish I could get some of those myself. Will attendance policies be modified to allow students and adults having any COVID symptoms, including congestion, runny nose, headache, upset stomach, fatigue, stay home? Will days be set aside to train teachers to do practice runs of protocols for attending a full school day, meals included with the same spacing students will experience prior to the student's return? Will Board of Ed members and administrators participate in trial runs for all spacing situations and procedures that accurately practice with the children will be doing prior to the children being put in these situations? Will there be increased support provided for students' emotional well-being amid this pandemic and with the new way of school potentially causing stress? How are parents, students, and staff going to be notified if COVID cases and when COVID cases arise? At what level of infection within the schools or the community will schools close again to return to distance learning? What are the plans if many teachers are unable to continue coming to work? What are the plans for distance learning, and will it look like it did last year? I know these questions are probably just the tip of the iceberg for some of the decisions this school has been making. And I appreciate your consideration. We parents need to know that you, Groton Public Schools, are doing all you can to protect children, teachers, staff, and families from the spread of this terrible disease, while supporting educational access for all students. I know this is a challenging task, but safety must be foremost. If you cannot say that all safety guidelines will be followed, then schools should not reopen until they can be. Thank you again for your time, your consideration, and your service, and I wish you all well.
Fran, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Before I actually say that, Mark, there seems to be people having a hard time getting in using the password that is on the website. Right. I don't know what to tell you. I'm just getting a couple of texts.
Yeah, I sent the same link to everyone, and we have 40 people in. So I don't know what to say either.
Jim, I've been working with Rita, and she has the right password and everything. Something, something, there's a glitch someplace.
It seems that Sherri Cutler has passed on a message that said that the new password worked. Has that been updated on the website? And once again, I apologize, guys, but we're just having some people who want to speak, and they're not able to get in.
If the old password is cached on their website, they need to refresh their browser, which will populate the new password. They're probably trying to use the old meeting password.
Thank you very much, Dennis. Thank you. Sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Beth?
Thank you. Beth Hoerler, Groton Education Association. I want to first thank all of the staff and especially the teachers and the admin and all of the support staff that have worked so hard over the last few weeks formulating plans through all the subcommittees. But I want to emphasize that science and safety have to be the driving factor for a decision on reopening schools. And I truly believe a hybrid approach to starting the schools is the best way. I understand that the state has its own thought process on that, and they'll make their decision. They did just recently, in the last three hours, come out with another press statement that they're now understanding that things might change. But at the top priority should be the safety of our students and the safety of our staff. In a GEA survey, we have 17% of our staff that need some kind of accommodation, either for themselves or for people they live with. We asked our teachers for their top three concerns, and the main concern was getting or giving COVID to someone, especially their young children who might have medical issues or their older parents. The isolation that teaching, being exposed to so many people can cause because they will then feel that they cannot go and see their extended families. And as one teacher very succinctly put it, "My top concern is dying. I never thought I'd have to choose between my profession and my life." So I think those are some of the concerns that we need to keep in mind as we move forward. And as Fran was saying, that we aren't even into August yet. We have college students coming back. Our tourist season is picking up. So with that, I do want to thank everyone for all of their input and their hard work and the collaboration that we've had. That's been phenomenal. And the plans that we have for staff training. But again, the basis of all decisions needs to be science and safety. So thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? All right, hearing none, I'm going to move from, because I didn't ask for the agenda for the responses from the board, so I don't feel comfortable adding that. But I will let the record know that both Beth and Fran really spoke, once again, to the science and safety of our children and our teachers. And I'm assuming that that's where the board feels as well, and that we're all having really trepidation on that. Rita, thank you for, it was good to see you, Rita. I'm glad that you're here.
It was very frustrating signing in this time. It took me 15 minutes.
But I'm glad. Thank you for persevering.
Yes, me too.
And I'm glad that you're here. So I'm now going to move us down to the student representative reports. But I don't know, do we have Duzey, or do we have Abbott?
I spoke to Joyce today. We do not have them, and typically we don't invite them. Although I did talk to Mr. Kellergur, and I know we're trying to get a junior representative. So maybe by the August meeting, we'll be all set.
Awesome. Great. So I'm now, Dr. Gwinir, you are on. And Dr. Gwinir, I do want to start off to say thank you for putting a lot of the information in our board notes in terms of our, some of the stuff, the business manager, because of Ken Knight's on vacation, imagine that. But thank you for adding a lot of the information so that it could move our meeting along as much as it can.
So let me start with some sad news, actually. I got a phone call about 20 minutes ago. Mr. Varekioni's father passed away. He was receiving hospice care. So this does not come as a shock to me, but I was hoping to have him introduce himself. He's a very experienced athletic administrator, actually, teacher, health PE teacher. He has been for many years an administrator at Cranston Public Schools. And he's going to come in, and I would rather have him introduce. I think you'll be very impressed. He was also going to give you a little bit of the outline. He's been working with the Eastern Connecticut Conference and, of course, the C I A C. And like a lot of things you hear in education today, there is no final decision. What we know is that the students have been allowed a period of time for conditioning, not, they have to be social distanced from each other. At this point, I know there are, well, there are tentative plans. And I think if we invite him to the meeting, Chairman Watson, on August 17, I think that will be a good time to have him lay out what the state of Connecticut is thinking. At this time, I can tell you, all the options are on the table in terms of the C I A C, whether we're going to, but I do know that they're talking about having no spectators at sports, having, making sure there's a limited number of team members. There are some states that are flip-flopping baseball with football, Rhode Island, for example. The idea that baseball may be safer to play in the fall, and maybe football would be safer to play in the spring. I think everyone, I just drove by a park, and I saw 10 kids playing full-court basketball. And, you know, obviously, our athletes are playing. So I don't want to be, I don't want to be a purist about this. But a lot of people are very concerned about bringing the students in. So we'll give a, I'll keep everybody updated as we go forward, and then Mr. Varekioni will come in on the 17.
Thanks. Great. So the next is the Elementary School Naming Committee.
I think I...
I'm going to ask Susan to brief you.
Thank you.
So I came to the board after our initial committee had met on numerous occasions, but just with two names. And I went back to them and asked for more information that they had, and told them that we were going to be doing a survey, and then COVID happened. So our next step will be to reconvene and broaden our committee, invite more board members I know who want to be involved, invite Jim Streeter so that we have a historian on board, and take a look at what we have, create that survey, and then send it out probably in the beginning, mid-September, once we get the plan rolling and we get everybody going. So then I'll be able to come back to the Board of Education with much more information.
Thank you, Susan. I think the next, I think the next one is actually yours as well, which is the themes.
Yes. So if I can share, Mike, I just put, I wanted to put up the themes. I analyzed the data in both the teacher and staff report and the parent-community Board of Education report. And interesting, the top three choices were unanimous among both groups. So I wanted to share with you. Mike, can you give me permission?
Yeah, I'm spazzing out here.
Don't do that.
You do have permission.
We got this.
Oh, good. Oh, I don't have the permission. That's why I was spazzing out. Mark has. Thank you, Mark.
Okay. So. Whoops. Can you see this?
No.
Not yet.
Okay.
You have to hit the little share button.
I thought I did that.
You did for a second, and then it left.
Okay. I apologize. I'm usually quicker at this.
I definitely think the internet is playing with all of us today. It does look like it says we are viewing your screen, but I'm not seeing anything.
Do you have the application already running in the background, Susan?
I've got it now open.
So have the program open, then go to Zoom, Share Screen, and choose that application.
Okay. If I can get back there.
You can Alt+Tab to go through the different programs.
All right. It looks like it's coming.
I'm not so sure.
Do you think that you could talk us through it?
I could, if I can get you back again. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
The number one, the number one theme that came out loud and clear was something called Active Exploration Play and Ingenuity. And we actually had on the survey links that parents could go to, staff could go to, to think about this. And we kind of designed it in two parts, so that there was a pre-K2 Active Exploration, which had developmentally appropriate play-based games for learning and active exploration that strengthened what we called brain pathways for children. And in three through five, it was really like our inquiry-based problem-solving approach that we use in the district. And it would be something that the staff would then develop so that they were able to experiment and explore and learn major concepts. And students would benefit from this magnet theme, like all our magnet themes, making social-emotional connections in creative, hands-on learning environment. So that really came out number one for both students and staff, and students, staff, and parents. The second priority theme was called Environmental Marine Life Science. And the environmental life science would engage students in daily instruction in core content area combined with what we feel in southeastern Connecticut is a very rich environmental life marine science lab. So really, in our setting here in southeastern Connecticut, we have just a wonderful opportunity, and we use our partnerships on the Thames River. We use our partnerships with NASS all the time in our schools. And we feel that this would be really an exciting way to explore healthy living habits, conservation practices, and give an understanding on how to become more mindful citizens within our community. And students, again, would have access to daily hands-on opportunities to investigate and connect with life outside the classroom and in the school community, and outside the school community. The third choice was the Discovery Academy, which would be nurturing creativity and curiosity. And this was something that would actually take the work from Renzulli and Reese at UConn on school-wide enrichment, Dr. Howard Gardner from Harvard on multiple intelligence theory. And the program would nurture every child's, I call them passions and proclivities, which are their gifts and talents, what they love to do, and what they're really good at. And I've done a lot of research myself in this area. And I think this is when we accentuate those positive strengths in children, they just flourish. So looking at those different, you know, the outlined of the multiple intelligences with bodily kinesthetic, visual, spatial, music, linguistic, and inter and intrapersonal, and of course, logical, mathematic, and the naturalist, that looking at those areas in combination with our core curriculums and giving kids opportunities to share what they know in those different ways so that kids would have a lot of choice, they do a lot of research, and development of different ideas. So that's kind of it. The third idea, which came out strong, was both STEAM and STEM programming with international baccalaureate primary years. But the Active Exploration Play, the marine science and discovery were the top three. And I can send this document. I apologize. I was working very hard on a plan last week.
Oh, is there a plan that we had to submit?
I had a plan. We had a plan.
Are there any questions for Susan about the naming committee and/or the theme-based?
Ken?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I have questions about the school-based themes.
Yes.
For Susan, when you send out your plan, could you also include in there what type of teachers we need to hire in each of those, for those different themes? I know, you know, at Northeast Academy, we've scheduled more music, more chorus. At the Kelnaski School, we have, I think, more art and more technology. So what is envisioned for these three themes? And what type of staff would we have to hire?
So I would say in our magnet theme with both the middle schools, we've hired, at least to get the theme ready. We've hired a teacher at Cutler, who was the Arts and Humanities Coordinator. And at Westside, we hired a STEM coordinator. At Katherine Kelnaski, we actually have a STEAM coordinator.
Oh, I know that. What I'm asking you is, when you send this out to us, would you just include in there the people we should hire for those three themes? You don't have to tell us now.
Right.
It would be nice to see financially what this, you know, is it just one person? Is it more than one? And what their qualifications would be.
Okay. I certainly will talk to Mike about that and the staff. I really see it as a coordinator to get things started, but there could be additional staffing. I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
I've got Liz and then Gretchen.
Then in.
And then Andrea.
I just was wondering if there's, because we are an international baccalaureate, middle school and high school programs, is there a way to connect the the elementary primary years to any one of those themes? Because I really do believe in a K-12 consistent program. And if we're going to endorse this international baccalaureate and add two out of the three levels of education, I was, I'm wondering if we can, knowing that the IB for elementary is very open to different thematic approaches, have we considered, or are we going to consider, adding the IB for the primary years at one of these, maybe one of these elementary schools? Just a question.
Definitely. That's me talking, but from my perspective, I would love to have a P Y P so that the district would then have the opportunity for a K-12 international baccalaureate.
I just think it's important to have consistency and continuity.
Yeah. And I think it would be an attractive magnet so that we can, as we get ready for Mike Zuber and Pat Gallagher tonight, we want to have magnets that are going to attract kids around town.
And also bring kids back.
Right.
Yes.
Right, exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz. I've got...
Thank you, Liz. I've got Gretchen and then Andrea.
No, my question's answered.
Okay, thank you, Andrea.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Gretchen.
If we go on to a marine science elementary school, we're going to need teachers who are, because elementary school teachers are wonderful people, but primarily, science is not their gig. They are, I can think of, I know two, well, myself included, elementary school teachers who could teach marine science. So I'm really concerned that we wouldn't be able to do a good job. And if we do put a saltwater fish tank down there, I want to help.
Thank you, Gretchen. Thank you.
We would make sure we had the, the professional staff development for that.
It's not a staff development. It's a long-term knowledge deal on that one.
Right. Well, whatever theme, everybody would have to be educated in the theme.
Any other question for Susan on the themes? Hearing none, I'm going to move us on. I think the next is staffing, and that should be Lori. I know I saw her at some point.
Yep, she's here.
Lori.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm here.
She's here.
So I have a general staffing update for you and, and a few other comments, which I think might answer some of the questions that have been coming up around the elementary theme. So from a general staffing perspective, we've obviously identified all the teacher hires that we needed to make between retirements, resignations. All of those hires were completed in the spring, other than we have three openings left, which were very late-breaking resignations that we received in the last probably four weeks, two to four weeks. So we are actually, we're, our hiring was almost complete, except for these last few resignations that have come up. So we're actively working on those and we're getting close to hires on those. So I don't foresee any concerns with teaching staff for the upcoming school year. You know, we're certainly keeping in mind that we have needs both in-person and a hybrid model, and we're taking that into account as we're looking at our hiring needs. So we do, we do believe we need all of our teachers, non-certified staff. We have a small number of openings in both aides and paraprofessionals. And we're recruiting and hiring for those at the moment. Well, obviously, as we get closer, we'll continue to monitor that. But even with a hybrid model, we anticipate if students are only in school, let's say, a couple days of week, those staff members are going to have to be redeployed those other days of the week to help with various safety protocols. So we anticipate having to continue to need staff, even if we're in the hybrid metal, hybrid model to staff at a similar level, because we'll want to redeploy those resources to help with anything from student transition and movement, six-foot social distancing, additional supervision. So there's a number of things that we certainly have to continue to tackle with the upcoming plans as they get further developed and get more detail to them. But we anticipate the staffing will be able to support those safety initiatives. Couple things, we, we had a number of elementary openings with retirements and, and knowing that we have the elementary schools consolidating with the new schools coming on board in a year, all of the elementary openings, they were hired as one-year assignments so that everyone coming in knew those were one-year assignments in anticipation that we would have to reestablish what we need for staffing under those magnet themes. So we do anticipate being able to free up resources so that if we need a specific, you know, science-focused teacher, we'd be able to reassess that for the, for the following year, once we get through this, the construction year. So all those staff members coming on board have taken those assignments, knowing it's a, it's a one year, and then we'll reassess what our needs are for those new schools. So, you know, all in all, considering certainly all the challenges everybody's been through, the hiring season has gone, you know, pretty smoothly overall. I think the district's in very good shape for the upcoming start of the school year with whatever the plan happens to be. So far, we have not seen a decline or an inability to hire staff because of the current situation. But again, it's still early to tell, but we certainly have been successful with our teaching positions and have not heard any concerns yet for the non-certified staff. But again, we'll have to get a little closer to the start of school before I think we have a good gauge on that.
Any questions on staffing for Lori?
Lori, how many staff have we hired this year?
For teachers, we have hired, we have hired about 23 already, and we have.
And what is the breakout for the grades?
I can take a quick look here. I would say probably 40% elementary and 60% secondary, just as a rough idea.
Yeah, maybe you can send us the, you know, the grade levels, the staff, and then, you know, and send that to us so we know. And where there are also like school psychologists and, you know, other staff members that you hired?
Yeah, there were a few social workers in there, speech and language pathologists. So we did have a few other special providers in there. Yeah, so we'd be happy to provide them for, and have Dr. Grenier maybe include it with board notes, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, I'll include it.
Can I ask that people, one second, Liz, can I just ask that people, that if you are not speaking, if you could just mute your microphone so that we could kind of lessen the noise that happens in the background? That would be really great. Liz, I see that you raised your hand.
Lori, I know we should, we, we are on the diversity committee together for, you know, recruitment, hiring, and retention. And I guess my question is this, is how many minority teachers were hired, if that's an appropriate question? Because that's, as you know, the data supports that our numbers are very low. And it's an area we want to improve. And I was just wondering, as part of our initiative for reopening, you know, what, what did it look like? What does that look like at this point?
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is just include, I don't have that information right in front of me, but what I'd like to do is include it in the report. We can share that in the board notes. We can show the positions that were hired and provide that information along with it, so the board can take a look at it.
That's a perfect question. Thank you. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome. Any other questions that we have on staffing? Lori, I, I do have one question, Liz, actually, that was going to be my, one of my questions is in terms of sort of how we were doing with the diversity. Because I know that that's been an issue for the board to be looking at for multiple years. And I know, Lori, you've been actively trying to pursue that. But my second is, is that I know that your, you and Ken are doing a lot of work at just sort of defining which pieces are that are helping us with the COVID in terms of sort of safety. And I think that would be important for us to kind of have as well. Because I guess my question is, is, do we, are we having COVID funds being used to support those staff position? And once again, I don't, I just would like to have that there so that the, that the board can really begin to sort of understand and then share with the community about what we're, what we're having to do to make sure that we do the right thing, which is to have safety for our children and our staff members.
Sure, sure. Be happy to provide that information.
I really appreciate that. Anything else on this? Lori, it's good to see you. Thank you. Um, Dr. Grenier.
Well, I am delighted to welcome back Mike Zubin and Pat Gallagher. As, just a quick orientation, especially for folks who are new. Mike, Mike and, and Pat work for Malone and McRoom, and they, the corporation and Mike as an individual has done outstanding work for us in helping to, for, for many years. Well, before I got here, so I'll say for the last 10 years, they, they really helped us to plan and organize. And so knowing that the two new elementary schools that are coming online must be racially balanced, I asked Mike and Pat to look at a few alternatives for three of our schools, of course, Claude Chester, Mary Morrison, and S.B. Butler. Those schools will be closing in the fall of '21, so they, they need a neighborhood catchment zone, or whatever, I want to call it. So I asked Mike and Pat to take a look at that, and they made an initial presentation. But I, I know the board was interested in, in seeing a few alternatives. And so I'll turn it over to Mike and Pat, and I am very, very grateful for their work because this is, this is very important that we get this right. Not only for the state reasons, but because one of the foundations of the Groton 2020 Plan was that we were going to solve racial balancing on a, essentially on a permanent basis through school choice. So we have one high school, we have one middle school, there will be racial balance 100%. And with our elementary, the, the five elementary that will emerge, we're going to, all five of them will be choice schools. So what, what Mike and Pat are going to share with us will be really instrumental to, to achieve that balance. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thanks, Dr. Grenier. If we can get permission to have Pat share his screen, we could walk you through the materials we have for tonight. I will say, logging on and seeing all the construction photos scrolling through, it was great to see the progress being, being made. And also for Suzanne to be able to go through the, hearing more about the theme, potential themes for the magnet schools, that was very exciting as well. So what I want to do tonight is I want to just give a recap of what we presented back in June, and then walk through the process that we went through of looking at the other four alternatives and talk through, through them with you so you could see what we prepared, what we thought were the major considerations, and how we arrived at what the plan was that we presented as sort of the recommended plan for now. But then really to receive input from the board after we present those plans, to have a little deeper discussion on all the options as a whole and where we're going to go from here and getting that plan for implementation for the '21-'22 school year. Next slide, Pat. As part of our planning process, anytime we do a school master plan, redistricting, reconfiguration, we always rely very heavily on getting guiding criteria in place, understanding what are those key parameters that we want to follow. So when looking at this redistricting plan, we really wanted to be able to look at having that long-term racial balance, be able to be in compliance with the state laws, but also to create a school landscape that all the schools were very close to each other and reflected each other, and reflected the district-wide average from a racial diversity standpoint. We also wanted to be cognizant of rightsizing the schools, especially going through the construction grant process. And that's not only from a neighborhood catchment, but also more importantly, for those magnet programs that you're going to want to be able to put in place to ensure that you have long-term balance, where you're not just at the whim of the neighborhood demographics, which tend to change over a period of time. And really to be able to dig in and to, even though you're going to a five elementary school landscape, the best we can be able to minimize the overall disruption, knowing that, you know, there's going to be a lot of change on the horizon. We're all in uncertain times now. But really to be able to present an option that, you know, really strive to, to minimize that and to be able to, best as we can, reconnect and look at some geographic proximity to try to have cohesive attendance zones as possible. So this is just looking at where you're at today and, you know, where you're going next year. Really looking at that five-school system, looking at, you know, being able to update the slides and potentially have some names on the Westside and Cutler site as that committee works its way through the work. But overall, you know, looking at the major school consolidations that are happening to be able to facilitate the school construction programs. So this is a big change going from numerous schools down to five schools. Next slide. So for those that aren't familiar, or those that are watching at home, the Connecticut State General Statute specifies, and a lot more words than we're going to present in these bullet points, but really looking at to ensure that the district's racial balance reflects that of the overall district. So each individual school divided by grade groupings reflects that of the overall district. And they really have two key categories for that, and you'll see where we're referencing those categories. So those schools that are plus or minus 15% from the district-wide average fall into that impending racial balance, and those schools that exceed that 25% deviation from the district-wide average fall into the official racially imbalanced category. According to the latest numbers from the state for October, or according to our calculation from the October 1st number, approximately 47.4% diversity across the pre-K5 elementary student population in Groton. So really, that's our benchmark for all of the options that we're looking at, is trying to get within at least of the 20%, if not the 15% threshold for that 47.4% for your district-wide minority average. When we went through this exercise, we always start with doing some building blocks. So what we wanted to do was to be able to look at not only each individual school, but then neighborhood blocks within that school, to be able, within all your schools, to be able to identify, you know, what are those pinch points? Or what are those areas that exceed either on the higher end, as we saw with several neighborhoods, Branford Manor and Long Hill Road, where, you know, Branford Manor nearly doubled the district-wide average, to the lower end, where we also had the deviation that exceeded that district-wide average, looking at some of the neighborhoods in No Ang, Mystic, Groton, and Long Point. These are shown on the next slide, where we have a majority of the town sort of colored in this gray area. And that gray area reflects no racial imbalance for any of those census block groups, whereas the orange areas represent those neighborhoods based on the census block groups that either exceeded on the high end, as we're seeing over on the city of Groton side, or exceeded on the lower end, that we're seeing on the Mystic and No Ang side, with the bulk of the town in that yellow, so kind of in that 15 to 25% category overall. Next slide, Pat. In recognizing the diversity across your community and that we have vastly different populations from Westside to Eastside, it did present some challenges, but nothing that we didn't feel that can be overcome with the combination of the neighborhood catchment and then the, the magnets overlaid on top of that. So as we got into this plan, we wanted to ensure that with Cutler's designation as a diversity school and the greater reimbursement there, that we can get the Cutler, the school at the Cutler elementary, uh, Cutler Elementary site as close to the district-wide average as possible, be able to correct those disparities long-term, but also to be able to have where we're looking at this as sort of the last redistricting plan Groton's going to go through for the foreseeable future, as you overlay and implement those magnet programs down top of it. So for this exercise, we wanted to be able to establish enrollment targets. And we do recognize that the enrollment targets do not reflect the maximum capacity, but represent what we're planning towards. Within those enrollment targets, we have some buffer space to be able to expand those magnet programming options, to be able to, as was mentioned earlier, and it was a great comment, to be able to provide some space within there for some of the magnets, the students that are out in the regional magnet schools to return back into Groton. So overall, what we have established is a enrollment target for Kolnasky and Northeast, that 400 students. We do recognize that they have been over that mark, and there is some additional flexibility to be able to go above that mark. For Westside and Cutler, those are at just over 600, and Charles Barnham at 375 students. So I think this map does a great job of highlighting those areas of change that are going to happen as part of the repositioning of your facilities. This isn't a redistricting map. What this is, is that we just color-coded the current attendance zones and grade out the school attendance zones that are going to remain open, and then color-coded S.B. Butler in the lower right-hand corner, red, also noting over on the city of Groton side, the satellite area that was part of the PV closure. Claude Chester really taking up the middle of the, of the town of Groton, and then over on the 95 corridor split north and south, the Mary Morrison School. So through the school closure, it's roughly about 50% of the overall land area of the community would be changing some schools overall as part of this repositioning of your school system, the five elementary schools. And one of the key criterias we began to look in on this is to be able to look at where possible, sort of our proximity of where there could be potential walkers and maybe some neighborhoods that weren't part of, part of that, part of that elementary school community can now be part of it. So looking at these two middle schools. So looking at these, um, two middle school sites, which will now become elementary school sites, putting just a simple half-mile buffer radius around it and looking at opportunities there to be able to, you know, create some greater walking communities within each of those schools. Next slide. So as we mentioned at our June meeting, we did go through an iterative process. We worked with the Groton administrators to be able to evaluate four scenarios, which we're going to present in detail, um, tonight in order to be able to get towards that recommended scenario. And as we went through this process, we were going against the guiding criteria as well as our analysis of the various neighborhoods by doing a look back of your historic demographics as well as the land use patterns in place. So Pat, if you can flip ahead. So what we did was, um, we took really your four main criteria, racial balance, um, opportunities to have flexibility and space for magnets, the overall redistricting impact, and then proximity to neighborhoods, and use those to be able to score each of the options. And what happens all the time, and it's no different here in the redistricting for, um, Groton is that, um, you know, a given scenario may score well in one of those categories and not too well in another category. Uh, we very rarely see one where we're going to have top scores for, uh, scenario across all the categories. It really becomes a little bit of a give and take, a little bit of a trade-off. Um, and I think it would be best served because we're going to revisit this matrix at the end after we talk through the options. Um, after we see scenarios one through four, as well as the recommended, um, we'll revisit this evaluation, evaluation matrix and talk through some of the scoring on there. So overall, we had to craft some assumptions. We used three years of historic enrollment. Um, the kids aren't in place yet for the 2021 school year, so we were using the 1920 as our most recent enrollment data. Um, we geocoded or address matched all the students across the community, um, looked at where they reside, did some historic trend analysis on that. Um, we're assuming that, you know, as part of the, uh, as part of the construction project, it's going to stay on time. Um, we've reserved, and it will open in 21, 22. We've reserved 270 pre-K seats with, um, guidance from the district that 120, um, would be at Cutler and 120 at West Side with 30 remaining at Kolnasky. And then overall, we want to ensure that your existing magnet programs, the students that were as part of, uh, that may have not lived in that neighborhood, but attended through the magnet program, we held them harmless and carried them through. Um, so any student that was outplaced or part of the magnet programs, um, we kept those in place as part of the, uh, part of, part of this redistricting plan. And we also left, um, but buffer space, although the buffer space varied between the options, we left buffer space across the board, whether it was through the enrollment targets being slightly below the capacity or just building in a little extra headroom, um, through the options that we presented itself to be able to provide, um, those robust magnet programs, which will really be the, um, the educational benefit, but also the long-term viability for enrollment management and racial balance for this plan. So as part of the recommended plan, we recognize that there could be some areas that you'd want to consider for transition or as we're calling them phase-ins. Um, the potential exists to be able to allow the students to stay in place at their, um, current elementary schools. And then as they matriculate through, um, be able to phase those in over time. And it's really at the board and the administrators discretion to be able to come up with a more detailed program on how they want to handle that. For other districts, we've gone through it where there has been sibling preferences as well as, um, some level of grandfathering, and that would really rely on space availability. It becomes a nuance to the, uh, redistricting plan itself. So for the plan that we presented back in June, um, and what we're calling the recommended plan, um, and all of our maps are structured in the same way. The heavier black lines that you'll see on the screen, those represent your existing boundaries and the new color coding that you're seeing represents what our proposal consists of. So starting over in the northeast corner at Northeast Academy, um, by and large, we've kept majority of that neighborhood attendance zone intact. You will see just north of Route One, the Bel Air neighborhood, Enson Drive, um, that we are calling that one of our phase-in areas. And on the next slide, when we get there, we could talk to a little greater detail about that. Well, thanks for skipping ahead. Yeah, Pat, I'll, I'll, I know you're going too fast on me. We'll bump ahead to that in a minute. Um, but overall, you know, that would be a change. We're looking at that neighborhood just north of Route One would move to the new Cutler School as well as, um, taking a look at the North Road neighborhood and the small streets off of that, um, that were part of Cutler would then shift over, um, to Northeast Academy. Um, Charles Barnham under this scenario would by and large, um, maintain, uh, intact. Um, and then really the other key areas over near, um, the West Side School or the new West Side Elementary School, um, I believe it's Branford Manor, Nathan Hale Court over in there. Um, we're keeping that same division that we had, um, previously in place as part of, I think it was the 2011 redistricting for racial balance, keeping that same, same, uh, same boundary there in place with the division between Cutler and West Side School and keeping, um, Katherine Kolnasky, um, intact. Go ahead, Pat. So these are the two phase-in areas we looked at. Um, the one is right out front of West Side School. It's really looking at, um, Brannadgeav, um, in that corridor in front of the new elementary school. We have about 10 to 15 students historically, um, come out of that neighborhood. Um, that's an area that we're highlighting in blue, um, which currently goes to Katherine Kolnasky, which, um, we think makes some sense to have it as a phase in the West Side, especially considering, um, that, you know, those could potentially be walkers to that school. Um, this would be part of the neighborhood catchment change. Um, we also recognize that as part of the magnet and choice program, students that may not be in that particular catchment can opt in and out of the schools based on whatever, um, their interest is in those programs when you eventually land those themes. And the other major area I mentioned earlier was just the, uh, Cutler phase-in area, and that's really Enson Drive, Bel Air, um, part of Noank, Levier Road, um, and Daniel Brown Drive in those neighborhoods just north of the, uh, just north of Route One and, and the new Cutler Elementary School. So taking a look at the recommended plan, what we did was we did enrollment snapshots. So through the geo-coding of the students, and we did this for all the options. Um, we looked at what the historical enrollment would have been there if the boundaries were in place. Um, and what we're seeing under the boundary, these boundaries is that Kolnasky would be right around 420 students. So just a little bit over what our target is. Um, but we're also factoring in there the existing, uh, magnet students, maintaining their status as magnet students. So having a little bit of growth there for, uh, the magnet program. Charles Barnham would be right around their enrollment target of 370, um, students overall. Cutler, um, would be right there with about 95% utilization. So having seat capacity there for expansion of the magnets, getting to that ultimate, um, capacity. And then in Northeast Academy, um, there would be some additional space there. Historically operated around 930 or so students, so a little bit of extra headroom there. And then West Side at a little bit less of an enrollment at 540 students. So definitely some opportunity for growth, but that was, um, one of the ones that is really going to depend on, um, being able to have, as Dr. Guneer mentioned, that attraction from east to west and west to east as part of the movement of students. Um, and looking at the, um, racial balance slide on the next page, looking at how this performed overall. And what you'll notice is that in all of these scenarios, we've done two different calculations, um, following suit of how the State Department of Education calculates it. For those schools that have a pre-K component, um, it's the top number in that final tabulation on the bottom. And for those that are just K5, it's just slightly different, um, in the number. So those that had pre-K are starred, um, and those are throughout the scenarios. Kolnasky, Cutler, and, uh, the elementary at the West Side site. So looking overall at our percent deviation going against that benchmark below, Katherine Kolnasky performed fairly well with only one year, uh, imprisoning upon that, um, that, um, rate, impending racial balance category, but still below that 15%. Um, Cutler, um, was right around the district-wide average. West Side was right around the district-wide average. Um, Butler was just about 5% of points above. And then Northeast Academy, although trending downward, um, came in at about 18 and a half percent. So a marked improvement over where they're at, um, where they're at today with those slight redistricting changes. Um, but adding a magnet program on top of that, um, especially one that's crafted well, can get down near that 15% using up that, uh, additional headroom there. Next slide. So overall, we looked at this scenario. This was one that I believe moved about 44% of the elementary student population. Um, and a large percentage of that, um, were students that were just, um, ultimately redistricted as part of school closures. Um, so really not many auxiliary moves outside of those, uh, those closures in place. We feel the phase-in areas do provide some benefits for the board's consideration. Um, there is space there to be able to support, um, your implementation of those magnet programs. And that overall, and this carries through for sort of the planning process that's in Groton, it's really going to take a little bit of a, the adjustment to the neighborhood boundaries as well as, um, crafting and managing those magnet programs going forward to ensure that you have that long-term diversity that the, that the board, the administrators and the communities, uh, and the community are, uh, seeking. Um, with that, I'll flip it over to, um, Pat to be able to walk us through our thought process on some of the other scenarios that we considered and then finally open it up to, uh, Q and A and discussion with the board on all those options.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so as requested at our, uh, meeting in June, we wanted to just give a little bit more background about our process and some of the, um, other options that were evaluated as, as part of our redistricting, uh, process. So we initially looked at four scenarios and we looked at these, uh, closely with the administration and evaluated the pros and the cons of each against, uh, the guiding criteria. As Mike mentioned, uh, there's always a lot of tug-of-war between the different criteria. And so certain scenarios do a better job at hitting a particular criteria, often at the expense of another. And so through that process of, uh, kind of learning about the trade-offs through those four scenarios, we're able to kind of take the best of each and ultimately put them together into the recommended plan. So I'll start with scenario one. This was very much a, uh, if, if we, uh, just started from scratch, uh, how would the attendance zones look? And so, uh, this has, uh, very significant redistricting impacts, about 60% of elementary students. Uh, but it really strove to kind of create, um, approximate and contiguous elementary attendance zones that are a little less gerrymandered than your current. We also, um, can you unmute please? Perfect. Thanks, Mike. Um, so looking at our enrollment trends, this one, uh, does have some, uh, some good enrollment balance across all buildings. Um, again, 100% utilization is not, uh, a sign of overcrowding. It just means it's, uh, it's hitting our target. Um, and actually all the buildings have, uh, have a lot of, uh, excess space on top of the enrollment target to accommodate, uh, both magnet and enrollment growth should it occur in the future. Um, the two buildings that we did strive to maintain some extra buffer space were Cutler and West Side. Um, and keeping that extra space available for magnet programs once you fill that out. So for scenario one, um, this had a good racial balance, very similar actually to the recommended scenario. Uh, West Side being the school, uh, that is in the impending category, uh, at between 15 and 18% higher than the district average. Um, this Northeast Academy attendance zone, um, is much different than the current one. And so we were able to get that below 15% for the last two years. But that comes at the expense of redistricting impacts. So one of the trade-offs that we uncovered during this process is that, um, the competing criteria of racial balance and disruption are kind of at odds with each other. In order to achieve that better racial balance, uh, there needs to be greater movement of students. Um, and ultimately we thought the recommended, again, had a good balance of, of not being too disruptive, but having some, uh, some benefits. But as I mentioned before, this, uh, scenario would, uh, redistrict about 60% of, uh, elementary students, which is really the, the biggest con that we found with this one. Um, it does have, uh, some of the positives. It does have, uh, uh, attendance zones that are more reflective of neighborhoods. Um, it does put all of Branford Manor in a single building. Um, it improves racial balance at Northeast Academy, uh, but again, at the expense of some significant, uh, redistricting impacts. Uh, and then having some extra space to support your future magnet rollout at Cutler and West Side. Getting into scenario two, this is a slightly different, uh, iteration where we wanted to, um, have less disruption than in scenario one. Um, so we kept the current Northeast Academy district intact. Um, and again, strove to try to, uh, follow neighborhood boundaries wherever possible. So again, on the enrollment balance side, this, this does a good job. It leaves some excess space at, at Barnham, Cutler and West Side that could eventually be used to fill out the magnet programs while officially, uh, efficiently using Kolnasky and Northeast Academy. On the, uh, racial balance side, Northeast Academy would be over 20% uh, for each of the last three years, uh, on a slight downward trend, but, um, uh, three school years ago would have been, uh, 23% lower than the district-wide average, dropping to about 21% lower, uh, this past school year. Um, that is a bit of a concern of Mike and, uh, mine, uh, having done this for both your district and other districts across the state. Um, it's difficult to predict racial balance, um, if not impossible. And our best strategy for ensuring longevity and making sure that you don't have to, uh, do a racial balance plan again is to get yourself below that 20% threshold. And so this was a little bit above that comfort zone, um, that, that, um, that, that we feel the district, um, should have. So, uh, takeaways for scenario two, uh, this would have Northeast Academy greater than 20% over the last three years. Um, it would have lower redistricting impacts than, uh, scenario one, but would, uh, still move over half, uh, of your elementary students. And again, uh, this also supports that future rollout of magnets at Cutler and West Side. Scenario three was really focused on minimizing disruption. And so we only reassigned students who currently attend SB Butler, uh, Mary Morrison and Claude Chester. The, uh, Charles Barnham Northeast Academy and Katherine Kolnasky, uh, districts were held harmless under this, uh, particular option. Uh, again, like the previous two options, uh, this one has good, uh, enrollment balance across all buildings, uh, with some extra space at Barnham, Cutler and West Side for future magnets, as well as, uh, efficient use of Northeast Academy and Katherine Kolnasky. Uh, like the previous scenario, because we leave the current Northeast Academy attendance zone intact, uh, that school is over 20% uh, lower than the district-wide average each of the last three years. Uh, Katherine Kolnasky, uh, would have been in the impending category as well during the 2017, 2018 school year, uh, before dropping just below the 15% threshold for the last two. So again, one of the, the main cons of, of this option is, uh, because our racial, uh, imbalance is greater than 20%, uh, there's some concerns over the longevity, uh, and, uh, not having to go through the, uh, racial balance planning process again. So this minimizes redistricting impacts. If we only reassigned the students who attend the three closed buildings, we would move, uh, 42% of elementary students, um, compared to 44% in the recommended plan, so we moved slightly more. Those moves in the recommended plan, uh, really are meant to address some of the shortcomings of scenario three, notably the racial imbalance at Northeast Academy, as well as some of the neighborhood challenges, um, the proximity challenges posed by, uh, your current attendance zones. Um, so for example, most of the areas surrounding West Side School under scenario three would go to Katherine Kolnasky as they currently do. Scenario four, um, this really looks at maximizing the size of the Cutler and West Side attendance zones. So the previous three scenarios, uh, left that buffer space at both buildings so that it could be filled out with magnet students. This tries to fill out both of those attendance zones to its enrollment target of 604 students, um, which would essentially create, um, more of a neighborhood-based catchment area with a less flexibility for magnet programs. So as you can see, uh, under this scenario, both Cutler and West Side would be over their enrollment target. That results in lower enrollment at Katherine Kolnasky, Charles Barnham and Northeast Academy. One of the drawbacks of this is that the magnet programs at Cutler and West Side would need to be net neutral. That is, the number of students, uh, coming in from other attendance areas would need to equal the number of, uh, students opting out. Um, and so that may be a little more challenging and give the district a little less flexibility in terms of meeting that educational vision for those programs. This option, um, does have the best racial, uh, imbalance out of any of the options that we looked at. Uh, Northeast Academy would be, um, just over the impending category over each of the last three years, uh, ranging from about 15 to 17%. And all other schools, uh, if we look at this past school year, would have been within 10% of the district-wide average. So very equitable on the racial balance standpoint. But again, that comes at the expense of very high redistricting impacts. So this option, uh, despite having the best racial balance, uh, disrupts the most students at 600. So this option, despite having the best racial balance, disrupts the most students at sixty-four percent of elementary students. And so again, that's kind of the trade-off that we grappled with when we were looking at the options, is how do we best get Northeast Academy, you know, below that twenty percent without necessarily causing a massive disruption where you're impacting several hundred more students? Hence, one of the reasons why we felt the opt-in areas were a great tool at accomplishing that while also providing some stability for the students who currently live within those attendance areas. As I mentioned previously, one of the other key drawbacks besides the redistricting impacts for scenario four was that the size of the attendance zones here does limit your ability to take in new students from other areas within the town. And so again, the need for that to be net neutral is another con for this option. So through this process, we were able to really weigh some of the pros and cons overall, ultimately leading to our recommended scenario that we presented in June and again tonight, which again, we felt does a good job at minimizing disruption while still improving some of those racial imbalances that we find within the Northeast attendance area, while also giving you flexibility to roll out your future magnet programs. With that, happy to hear your thoughts and ideas, and if you have any specific questions on the map, I do have some larger ones that I can pull up on my screen if you want to talk about a particular area.
You're muted, Kim.
No, I'm not. I see Gretchen has a question.
I do. In a bunch of the research, I was doing a literature review this weekend on a totally different subject, but what coming up was school districts and states moving away from racial imbalance to financial imbalance. So it, like, moving, not being about skin color anymore, but being about equity of finance, yeah, financial equity? That works. Okay. So I know Connecticut wasn't slower than Rhode Island, because in the sixties, Rhode Island redistricted. We didn't redistrict until Sheffers at O'Neill in the nineties. So it will probably be late, but how, do we know how these redistricts fit in if we, if they, if somebody suddenly turns around and says, now, we need to make sure it's financially equitable in each school? In case Connecticut gets the idea of being ahead of the game for cheap.
Mike, I can take a stab at that.
Okay.
When we began this process, we knew that students, Supreme Court ruled that you couldn't assign students by race. I think it was a 2008 decision. So we worked with a couple of folks, Rick Callenberg came, and he is a leader, along with Michael Alves, in exactly what you're saying, assigning students by socioeconomic, trying to achieve socio-economically balanced schools. And so we fed all these data to Michael Alves, and we also shared it with Mike Suba. It is a bit of a balancing act. The state of Connecticut says you have to balance the schools by race, and the Supreme Court says you can't assign students by race. So Mike and Pat have tried to pull this together by neighborhood, which really aligns, as Michael Alves would say, nearly 100% to socioeconomic. So we will have schools that are socio-economically balanced, and all the research on that says that all the groups benefit, as opposed to putting a bunch of, whether they're the same race or mixed race, when you put poor kids together, you tend, black and white poor kids together, you tend to get poor results. It's the balancing of the socioeconomic levels that really rises the tide for all students.
That meets with the reading I was doing. Thank you. I know Rita, I've got, Rita, I'm going to go to Lee, since Lee has not had a chance to speak yet during the meeting, so Lee.
I would like to say that the charts and the graphs are probably the best I've seen in a long time. I actually can understand what we are looking at, and I think that there are going to be some people who are not happy and some that'll be thrilled, but I, for the first time, I really understand what we're dealing with. So thank to both of you.
Thank you, Lee. Rita?
I have three questions for Mike. My first question is, is Branford Manor going to be split again down the middle?
To that question, under our recommended option, we do have it split down the middle. Under, Pat, was it scenario?
What was the scenario that you preferred? I couldn't tell. You had good, good, fair, fair. What is the one that you thought we should go with?
Well, we thought, we really liked the one that we recommended. I think when we looked at keeping Branford Manor together, it was one of those major challenges, because there was such a, there's such a density of students in there, and as we showed in one of the other slides, I believe it was about, at least that block group was about eighty-seven percent minority. It really posed a big challenge in order to achieve that diversity balance. So I think in most of them, we went through the exercise and realized that in order to be able to have best long-term balance, we would have to have sort of a split Branford Manor between Branford Ave and then Amather Street as the other component of it. And that's just really due to the uniqueness of that development and the density and the number of students coming from that, Rita.
Okay. My second question is, you always have the max load at Catherine Colnaski and Northeast Academy is 400, whereas Catherine Colnaski has a whole wing of classrooms that was never built on Northeast Academy. So I mean, it's sort of, it doesn't ever make sense to me when you don't include the, really, the correct amount of the number of students that the schools could hold, even with Charles Barnum being at 375.
Yeah, I think that, and I do recognize that historically, they've been a little bit all over, a little bit higher than that, and I do know of the wing of classrooms that were never built at Northeast. What we wanted to do was to be able to put in good targets right now with not knowing what the robustness and what the size of the magnet would look like there, which are really ultimately going to drive the future, drive the future enrollment at the buildings. So even though we are using 400, you'll see in all the options, we're trending above that in most of them. I know historically, the enrollment at Northeast has been in the 420s over the last few years, and we do recognize that.
Yeah, that there are often many more students in a classroom there than there are at some of the other schools.
Yeah, and that becomes part of the equation as well of when we're looking at this and we're sort of not, we don't have all of the full programming at the elementary schools in front of us, because you're still going through that now, to be able to determine, you know, what that ultimate final number would look like. So we think it's a good planning target, and we think it's a good number that has some flexibility should one magnet program be much larger in attendance or students opting in than another one, without having to change the boundary before you know what the programs are, or before you land the program.
And my third question is, how are we going to have focus groups and share this with the community, with the parents?
So Pat and I were talking about that, and I see we had, I thought, last time I peeked down, it's 45 participants, part of our meeting now, and I do know it's on the local access. And that's something we need to talk through with the administration. What we've been using for some of our clients is we put it out on a web-based viewer, so we share the link, you put it up on the webpage, you type in your address, and it tells you under the options what the impact would be. Do you, you know, if I'm at 72 Instant Drive, am I moving, am I not moving? So parents can quickly figure out, just by almost like Googling an address, of what the impacts are to them. And if the board wants to go forward with that, it's something we could easily have in place for, you know, probably next week, Pat, right?
Yep.
Yep.
And then, let's say somebody from Enson Drive that presently goes to Northeast Academy and is being redistricted to the school at Cutler, and they want to take part in the sibling, you know, go continue at Northeast. So then another, a bus goes through there and picks up those children and brings them to Northeast. Is that, because, is that correct? Is that how that would work if siblings, you know, parents wanted younger children to stay?
Yeah, really good question, and I'm glad you asked. I think that's exactly how we were sort of looking at this, would be that for all existing, and it would be up to the board's discretion to see if they wanted a grandfather in siblings to provide, obviously, you have to cut it off somewhere. So, you know, somebody has that third or fourth child that spaced out a little bit much, you don't want to be doing an extra bus run, so you do it within reason. But that was the idea eventually, to be able to have it where they could finish their experience at Northeast, and then ultimately, over a couple of years, that neighborhood becomes part of the Cutler Elementary School. And because it's so close, it makes some sense there. So we calculated all of our numbers based on the fact that the students would stay in that, stay in that area. They would be, yeah, but we didn't go ahead and calculate any grandfathering or anything. We didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
No, because we don't know who has a child that maybe two, three, or four in the pipeline. So that's something that, you know, would do that more fine-grained look, should we get some more direction on where it's going. In the past, we've worked with boards that have sent out, you know, as they got a little further along, sent out a quick survey to those parents, asking them, you know, would they like to be included, how they feel, and then you'd be able to make those finer-grained decisions based on their input.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gretchen, I got you, but I just want to make sure that there's someone else from the board who would like to ask a question, but I totally have that. Is there anyone else? Jane, I think you're muted.
Okay, I'm on, and that's Polly. Ten pounds lighter. My interest was really in how this would be presented to parents. I'm sure they're going to have concerns, and the transition might be difficult for several, and that was just pretty much answered for me.
Gretchen?
Okay. I can also kind of answer the busing issue for Enson Drive through Bel Air. That's all one neighborhood. When we first moved here, we thought we were districted to Butler, then found out we were districted to Noink, but there were still kids that were grandfathered in, so we had many buses. As long as they're staggered, it's not too bad. Otherwise, you can't move. It's just, it's already a mess in here. So my big question is really, it's sort of in two parts, about Northeast and Catherine Colnaski. So back in the day, when my children were, everybody knows, at Noink, and my baby was the last one out, they promised vehemently that there would be no more than 400 children in either of those schools ever, and we've seen that did not happen. So I know that that's just a reminder, we don't want to make promises we don't plan to keep, because I know a lot of my friends voted on building those two schools due to that no more than 400 ever, we promised. The next thing is, how does, this is a big question for me, because I've been wondering about it for about 10 years. How is it that Northeast and CK have the same number of kids in them when they never finished building Northeast? Anybody have an answer to that one?
I think the question was why they have similar enrollments.
Yeah.
Even though there's the missing four classrooms on Northeast. I think Rita answered it earlier when she mentioned that some of the class sizes in Northeast have been a little bit higher than some of the other schools. So it's, capacity and enrollment is a function of two things. It's the number of classrooms and then how you load those classrooms. The way we're viewing it as part of the enrollment target is just having sort of an even number of sections per grade moving through to get to that 400 number. But we recognize that as part of the neighborhood demographics and the choice programs, that you may have a bubble year, so rather than having all four sections, so you'll have four classrooms in each grade, you may have a bubble of five in one year or two bubbles, where then you get pushed up to the 420 or 430 student enrollment. That happens in the, and, you know, that ultimately happens everywhere in schools, but it's really that function of, you know, how many students are in the classroom? Are you loading close to your max class-size guidelines, or are you not?
Right. So the four classrooms, if we just minimize, you know, minimally average our class sizes at 20, which is a little bit low, that's 80 kids. That's not a bubble. For the two schools to be jogging 80, 80 kids at, that's a lot of kids.
So I'm concerned about whether this is the question about the redistricting.
Place to be talking about this. It just, it just had one of the wow moments.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we stay on topic. We have so much on our agenda.
Having just one of those holy cow moments.
Okay. Jay?
Okay. So first of all, thank you, Mike and Pat. I know that it's my fault that we're going through all this again, but the review of all the data, I have to tell you, it was very well done. I still would like to see these slides, just to review again. I specifically was very interested, and I believe it was the first scenario that seemed to have the least disruption of the neighborhoods, but I think you said had the most disruption of moving kids, but it sort of reset things back to the neighborhoods. Because my main concern is this splitting of a couple of neighborhoods. Even though I know it happened years ago, I was just hoping that, since this is going to be our last one, that we could straighten it out. And I'm wondering, what is the difference in the number of students disrupted in that? I think it was scenario one versus the recommended scenario.
Yes. Go ahead, Pat, if you.
Sure, I got the numbers in front of me. So for the recommended scenario.
Pat, put the map up while you're talking.
Sure. Please. Share my screen again. All right. Everybody see? All right. So the recommended scenario moves 44% of students. That's a little bit more than the minimum. Minimum would be 42%, if only the three closed buildings were reassigned. Scenario one would move 60% of your students. So.
Could you show us the map, please?
Sure.
Yeah, 33, Pat.
There's scenario one. And I can get the bigger map if you'd want to see a specific area.
So Jay, in this one, where Pat is hovering his pointer now, hopefully everybody could see it, this is one of the ones that took Branford Manor and kept it whole and didn't have the split, and had that in Westside, as well as sort of created the more contiguous blocks. One of the things we did see with this, and this is going to be, and this is really what you're hearing and what you're feeling on the magnet theme programs, under this scenario, by having all of Branford Manor together, it then put sort of the racial imbalance pressure over onto Westside, and it would rely on having that magnet movement or choice movement of students in and out of Westside to ensure that the longer-term racial balance was put in place. And I believe we did leave some considerable space in that scenario, Pat, if I'm correct, for the Westside magnet program, as well as the Cutler magnet program there. So this would really, rather than through the neighborhood catchment component, this would put a little bit of the heavier lift onto the magnet choice programming component to ensure longer-term racial balance. So I think it's a decision, and I think it's a good option, I think it's a decision for the board to be able to look at where you're at within that magnet landscape of what you think the likely movement attractiveness and how you're going to deploy those programs to be able to have the east-west and the west-east movement to ensure that you stay at that, at that mark and below.
So from the beginning, my concern has been moving half of the neighborhood. So, from the beginning, my concern has been moving half of the neighborhood of an elementary, um, school, basically across town. And I know we're already sending them to Claude Chester, but now we're going even further, by several miles. And so I realize it's more disruptive, but it just seems to me that this is just more fair and more clean of a, of a final districting.
Jay, could I make an observation?
Sure.
From Route 1 to Route 95, you, you have scores of children that we're going to have to say are not going to Northeast Academy. That, that whole area there. You also have scores of children who, I think, were very satisfied to go to Charles Barnum. And you're going to have to eliminate them and send them all the way across to Northeast Academy. And, and then you, you've got a Katherine Konowski area that's going to be very, very much altered. And then what, what that does to that particular, uh, magnet program concerns me. My, my, my personal thought was, if we could go back to the, Pat, could you show the recommended? Anyway, so you, you see what I'm saying? There, there are hundreds of children that are not going to go to the same school. And, and I know that that's always been problematic. With, with the recommended scenario, ba- basically everyone who goes to Northeast Academy stays Northeast Academy. Tell me if I'm wrong, Mike and Pat. Everyone who goes to Charles Barnum goes to Charles Barnum. Everyone who goes to Katherine Konowski continues to go to Katherine Konowski. And, and we, and we create this, uh, the situation, uh, where the students who used to go to Claude Chester, I realize that they traveled away. But that was a decision that was made, uh, quite some time ago to, to try to achieve racial balance. That's my first observation. My second observation is, I've, I've done some focus groups in, in the West Side area. And, and frankly, the attraction of a brand-new school at West Side, I'm not sure we're going to be able to come up with such a terrific theme that somebody wouldn't want to like, for, for example, I, I spoke to the people in the Bridge Street area. And they were very happy to go to the new school, a- as opposed to SB Butler, because S, because New School is right nearby and SB Butler is quite a ways away. So I'm, I, I do not want to, well, I'm, I realize I'm on a short leash here. But, uh, I do not want to rely on what Mike is suggesting to have a, have a, a really, a significant portion of the racial balance rest on our magnet. I, I, I think that that tweaks a good plan, but I don't think it's the heart and soul of it. And, and I, you know, my, my hope would be that with minimal changes, with, with the two, uh, the two little striped areas here, the, the phase-in areas, that, that we would be able to open school on September 1st, 2021, i- in have pretty nearly racially balanced schools. And, and, and then use, use the, the Magnet Program, which will be attractive. But of course, it'll be attractive at two brand-new schools. And I think that's going to be actually pretty attractive for people that, uh, I, I'm not sure if somebody from the color side of town is going to say, wow, I really want to go to West Side. And I'm not sure if somebody from the West Side of town, some will. But, uh, I, I was hoping to achieve racial balance a- and, and basically use, use the socioeconomic balancing of the magnet just to, to keep it in balance, as opposed to achieve the balance. That's all I have to say.
Kim?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask a question? Um, you know, when you look at this scenario, there's a lot of nice, very good things about it, but I really have a hard time with the students who would be at West Side, who would be bused to Konaski that live across the street from West Side, that could walk there. They're going to be able to see that school, but not go to that school. And that, to me, is not correct. I mean, I, I'm, you know, is it possible, like, the Tollgate Road, is that possible for those kids to go to Charles Barnum? Because that seems like a community that is a Navy community that should sort of stay together. And then somehow redo this down here where the children that are, that could see West, the new school at West Side could go to that school. I don't know, I just, you know, where you're going to be busing kids to Konaski because it sits on top of a hill. So, you know, you could draw from different areas. But I just have a very hard time with the kids that could walk to West Side not being able to. It's the same way you're redistricting, um, that Bel Air area to Cutler, to the new school at Cutler. They could walk there.
And Rita, we had both of those as phase-in areas, but I think one of the important things, too, if, um, they do want to go to that
Yeah.
Yeah, Pat, on slide six, there you go, on slide 16, I know it's a little hard to see. Um, but over on West Side, we took all of Branded G, um, in that corridor and made that a phase-in area, very similar to the Cutler, where, um,
Oh, okay.
They could opt to stay in Konaski or they can opt to be part of the neighborhood attendance zone, for, uh, for West Side eventually. So, you know,
But I don't see that on the map, though. I, I don't see that on, you know, I, I could see it for the Cutler area, but not the West Side.
Yeah, it's a little, Pat, if you could just zoom in a little bit.
I'm going to actually grab the big map because it is a pretty small area.
I know, it's such a, yeah, such a small little strip there.
Oh, that little tiny one?
So, yeah. So we made this nice little, um, along the corridor outside of West Side, as sort of that area that would get phased in from Konaski to, um, across the, as you put it, across the street from West Side, um, into West Side in the long term. But also, I think one of the important parts of it is that for those that may live within the neighborhoods, uh, adjacent to it, but not directly across the street, they could apply for, that currently go to Konaski, they could apply for, um, choice and magnet seats at West Side if they're on Warner Street, Heinz, Morris Ave, um, off of Shenandoah. To be able to then be part of West Side through the Magnet Program.
Okay. Yeah, that's very important for, for the families to understand that.
Yeah, and, you know, that's what we're trying to like, wrap around with the unknown of like, well, what is the size of that going to be? How does that get like, and I know that's all yet to come. I think one of the challenges Pat and I had was with West Side and Konaski right there, I mean, I believe as the crow flies, they're less than a mile away.
Yes.
We're looking at like a thousand, um, two schools, we have over a thousand seats, um, to, to be able to fill. And how do you do that while having these sort of contiguous, what everybody sees as the traditional neighborhood? Um, and it, you just, it's really difficult. It's just, you want to strive for it, but it's something that you really can't achieve when you put in all the other factors. So we wanted to be able to be cognizant of that, provide some flexibility, um, but also realizing that that Magnet and Choice are going to be a powerful program for those that, um, may like the program there or may like the idea of walking to school. So I think it serves kind of two purposes.
And, and most of the, the pre-K seats, there'll be 150 between Konaski and West Side, and then 120, did you say, at the Cutler?
Yeah. That's it.
Okay, that makes sense. Yep, that's good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the board? So can we talk about next steps?
Can I ask to be recognized as a Groton Town Councilor to ask a question?
This is actually a Board of Ed meeting, and we have been spending a lot of time on that. But we will have a point where we can have public comment about that.
Will it be about the issue to ask these questions?
Sure, sure. Unless there is a member of the board that would like to recognize their, their, their term. So what are our next steps?
So, I think in hearing and seeing the, um, you know, the number of participants we have, Kim, I think what we're going to do is, Pat and I are going to work with Dr. Gannier to be able to come up with sort of our virtual COVID platform to be able to get this out a little better within the community, um, and talk through that. We can create the technology side and leverage, um, the communications that you have. I know parents right now have been hit with every survey or reading every plan. We don't want to overdo it. So we're going to try to keep it as concise, informational, and, you know, be able to really understand where we're at and the board's at with as little time at, and, you know, that the parents have to put into it as possible. And hopefully in the next week or so, be able to get a platform put out there through your website so they could figure out what's going on, what the plan means for them, and then be able to provide some comment back on it before, um, we could come back and, and have another meeting on it with you.
So, um, would this platform allow, as, uh, Portia had indicated, it was, is that platform going to allow to have, um, be able to have questions and answers?
Yeah, what we've been doing, um, as part of this is with the, um, Groton Public Schools domain, we ask that, rather than coming into like Mylona McBroomer, Pat or myself, because sometimes what we see is the, the questions are of the personal nature. My student has an IEP or something, or something, or something. And, you know, it can get funneled into, um, somebody on the administration side that can then dish it out to us, the ones that are appropriate for us. So a lot of people, what we do notice, and we did do this pre-COVID for a Shelton School redistricting, we had a packed auditorium, we put out the online platform. Within a few weeks, we had about 2,000 people go and view. And then everybody was informed and, um, it made for such a, a, a better process. So I think in general, we can be able to have that email there for people with specific questions. But I think a lot of people in the community just want something to find out what it means for them and want that information. It sounds right now from the board, and I think we would need direction on that. Do we want to share through the viewer, all four scenarios plus the recommended? Share the recommended, how do you want us to proceed with that part of it?
The other, the other point before that question gets answered, and I do have a thought about that, is, um, I, um, duh, a, a lot of our families don't necessarily always have internet access. And so I just want to make sure that, um, we have a, we, we have a form. We, we try to disseminate this information as much as possible. And maybe, um, and maybe we need to have it more geared towards schools. And maybe, um, and maybe the board members can hook into with principals and with one of you guys and kind of have these Zoom meetings with, with the certain schools so that parents can have a more intimate way of, of finding out about, um, the programs. That, that's my only guess. The second, if you want things to be concise, the fact, I think that once the board makes a decision about what the recommended is, and I don't think that we're in a place yet to do that, um, because I think the board needs to, I, I think we need to kind of grapple with all of this stuff as well. I think we're going to need to have a couple more meetings. Sorry, Mike, I, we just, for those of us who have been through this, um, i- it is a really pain, as you know, it's a very painful process, and, and I would like to kind of get it right as much as possible. Is, I don't know if putting out all the plans, um, makes a lot of sense in terms of whether, but I, I mean, I want to make sure that people understand what's going on, but they're not hearing this information like we're hearing it. And I think that people could then take information and kind of go with it and, and not be in, not have all the information to make a, a good decision.
I'm not voting for one of these Democrats on the Board of Ed ever again. I raise my hand to
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you. Um, so, um, as I was saying, um, I, I, I think that, I, I think that we need to have a little bit more community conversation as well. But I also think that the board needs to have more com, have a more conversation about it, um, going forward.
I'd like to, I really like the idea, and, and we already have focus groups set up at the schools. I really love the idea of the five elementary schools hosting, each, each school hosting, uh, a, a session that we could, we could go through, we could roll through some of this stuff. Uh, w- once we, uh, once we get going, you know, we, we of course have six elementary schools right now. And, but, but I think, I, I would want to hear, for example, not, not just from the three that are closing, but I, I would want to hear from the Northeast Academy parents, for example, about the notion of 40 or so percent of the kids not going to Northeast. I, I, I think we need to find that out, right? I, I want to hear from the Mary Morrison parents and the Charles Barnum parents about, uh, what the alternatives. And then we could feed that back to the board. You know, I think we could, I think we could probably pull something like, certainly within the month of August. And then by September, Kim, I, I think we'd be able to come back to the board and say, here's, maybe some of the board members could, could join us on some of these meetings. But we'd be able to come back to the board and say, here's a feedback from the community. And, and, and then the board, maybe with a, with a COW, then ultimately with a vote. If, if we figure all this out by the last Monday in September, I think we'd be in decent shape.
Kim?
Yes, Rita.
That timeline is, is too aggressive. I think the community needs more time than August, there's so much going on. I think everybody needs to get back to school. And maybe they, you know, we could do something then. But I also think you should present it to the town council, Mike, and, um, the RTM and get input from them. Um, I think it's, I mean, we've had focus groups, but, I mean, Mike, you have these focus groups, the board knew nothing about them. I mean, we didn't know that there were fo- focus groups going on, that you had focus groups at West Side. I mean, we're sort of being left out of the equation.
Right.
And I really feel that the end of August or beginning of September is way too soon to vote on this. We don't have to, I mean, this isn't going to happen for a year.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Yeah, no, that
I mean,
You're relieving my stress, thank you.
Good. Yeah, we have time, and I think as much as we can hear from the community as possible is what's important.
Right, because once again, I think everyone's focused on what's going on right now. Like to, to think about what's happening with the elementary schools, our, our think. Um, with that said, is there any other questions that we have from the board? Hearing none, I am going to move us on to the next thing, which is our, our redistricting. So, um, the two of you, thank you so much for being part of this conversation.
You're welcome.
And it looks like, um, it, I, yeah, thank you very much, Mike.
We have some follow-up to do, I got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll give you a call, Mike, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. And have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Before, Mike, that you start, I just wanted to, just to let the board know that, um, this, this next topic is going to be a very large topic as well. And we have not even hit, um, a large part of our, um, of our agenda. And it is already eight o'clock, and I do want to pay attention to the fact that there's a such thing called Zoom fatigue. And so, um, I might ask us, once we get through that, if we take a look at what's left on our agenda and possibly try to modify, modify that a little bit, um, to make sure that we get the questions that we, that the, the votes that we need to do, need to have happen. But maybe there's some things that maybe we can, um, kind of scrooge to the, to the, um, to another, uh, meeting. And not need to keep on passing the buck, but, um, I'm just, I'm concerned about the fact that it's eight o'clock and, um, we have another huge topic to go through. With that said, uh, Jay?
I don't know if this is out of order or not, but it just seems to me, this plan hasn't even been approved by the state yet. And it's already changing as of today. And I just wonder, is it worth spending an hour going through these 30 pages and voting on something that could be changed by tomorrow? I mean, can we just table the whole thing? Or is there some state law that we have to vote on it tonight?
No.
Oh, no, in fact, you, you, you don't have, you, the requirement is that each district submit a three-part plan. One, to accommodate all children coming in. One, to accommodate a hybrid model, like 50% of the children coming in. And, and one to be prepared for 100% remote learning again. Even the state is not going to approve it, Jay. I think they Uh, the, I think they, they wanted it because they, they, they wanted to, to start sharing some of the good ideas. Like, I, I heard a little bit on the governor's, uh, news conference today. You know, you hear, you hear things, you say, oh, that's, that, that, that's a, a pretty good idea. Let me tell you what I'm, I'm doing tomorrow, and this may help with tonight, Kim. Uh, I'm, I'm posting, I'm posting the plan on our, on our website. We're going to have a, excuse me, is it? There's going to be a section of our website that is going to be called reopening updates. And, uh, the plan will be there. And then I've asked each of the principals to, uh, establish a, a focus group. Uh, and I know the secondary folks are going to have, uh, both a student's focus group and a parent focus group. So we'll have a, we'll have a lot of feedback. And, uh, and I, and Susan and I, in the interest of time, uh, the, the second page of this plan is a, is a pretty good overview of the whole deal. And I could talk a little bit about the health measures and, and, and maybe we leave it there and, 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 because we could, we could maybe do this in bite-sized pieces. But you're right, Jay, it's, it's a, it's a plan that's going to change for sure. Uh, a- and so I'm, you know, I, I told everybody, the scores of people who helped to write it, that it, it's, it's, it's the plan, we're putting it in. I, I, I'm thinking of it as a draft and we're going to modify it as, as, as need be. But I think Susan can cover the big part in, in, in about two or three minutes, if, if that's acceptable.
Mike, I'm going to lift just that second page because I think that's our talking points here.
Yeah, I, I have it if you want me to do it.
Well, let's see, let's, let me try it again.
Okay.
Do you see this?
We do.
Yes, yes.
Thank goodness. It worked this time. So this is the, the plan, as Mike had said, that hundreds of educators, board members, community members have worked on in our different subgroups as we prepared this roadmap to reentry. And, um,
Oh, no.
And then we were able to put together.
Your, your text is missing.
So, Mike, I think, um, one of the interesting points that we have a picture of here is the hybrid model.
Excuse me, Susan, let, let me put the document up.
Okay.
So stop sharing, please. And let me see if I can do it. That would be.
Gotta love Zoom.
Okay.
Gotta love something.
Now maybe, maybe mine will.
Yeah, you just need to make it bigger, I think.
Yes, dear. Okay, how's that?
That's much.
I'll give you a little there. All right, a little smaller. Okay, here we go.
So I would say that we've had hundreds of educators and, um, board members and everybody looking at all the elements that needed to go in this template into the state plan. And so we had all these subgroups, working groups, working on this. And then we had to bring it all together as a consolidated plan. So that really was most of our work last week, um, in getting this all put together. But we've had to think about this plan in the three ways that Mike just mentioned. Face to face with all students in, um, full-time instruction, um, during the twenty twenty-one year. Um, so long as all the public health data continues to support the model. And if this model will be, um, supported with more intensive, um, mitigation, there might have to be some changes or cancellations. We also have to follow all the health and safety. And we heard a couple of parents and people speak to that in bringing them face to face altogether. The other possibility is that we would have to go distance learning. And we know that we want to be able to make sure that we've even improved distance learning so that we provide both asynchronous and synchronized teaching and learning for all students, should that happen. But this hybrid model came to our attention. And it's really very popular across the whole state of Connecticut. Um, and in that you would bring in half of your student population. So you'd have class sizes that are more like eight to twelve versus twenty, you know, up to twenty-four. And it seems like that would be much more manageable. So half the kids would come in Tuesday, three cases, twelve, by the alphabet. And we'd make sure families were together on this. Wednesday would be the deep cleaning, the distance learning, where a teacher could bring the whole class together and work with everybody. Thursday and Friday would be the other half of the cohort. So if I'm not in school those two days and I'm working independently and remotely, and I'm getting feedback from staff, from the teachers, and, um, you know, I'm marching through. But at least I'm able to be in a classroom with my teacher and with some of my peers so that I can really get adjusted. And our staff has been working on curriculum reentry. What does that look like in the first sixty-eight weeks? And a lot of it has to do with social emotional learning. It has to do with what does my, what does my reading habits look like in school? And what do they look like at home? What does the learning management system that I'm going to be working on, how does that work? So teaching students and parents so that if we should go totally remote or even in this hybrid model, how is it working so that we do it even better than it's done before? And then this plan really has identified, um,
Uh-oh.
Susan, I think you're muted.
I think, okay, am I on again?
Yes.
Okay, so we're really proud of this part because we really chose, um, a plan of reopening that would address inclusion equity and, um, diversity and accept access to all learners with the one-to-one, the, um, hotspots, even the toolkits that we're sending home so that kids would have everything they needed for either the hybrid, distance learning, or even at school. So that they'd have their own materials. And, um, as part of our social emotional learning, we have over about a hundred educators working with Jamal Davis, Ada Allen, and Nadine Macklin with diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of the action plan. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. This first page really tells the story. And then in the twenty-two pages, we give all the details and I'll let Mike speak to that because the health and safety of our kids, social emotionally and, um, physically for our students and our staff is most important. That's what we're looking for. We're looking at what is the most healthy, responsive way to bring people back and to take care of them physically and emotionally. So, Mike, you want to take it from there?
Let me just, and, and Sam can, can chime in. I, I've been talking about what I think in, in terms of health and safety, the, the big, the big six things that we're going to do, and this is what's in the plan. We, we have a plan for every, every student and, and teacher, pretty much, uh, wearing masks, maintaining six-foot distance between students, certainly if we do the hybrid. Making sure that the children are instructed properly and have opportunities to wash their hands with, with soap and water on a regular basis. We are recommissioning the ventilation system to make sure it works at the design capacity uh, in, in all of our buildings. Sam has identified and, and we purchased, uh, I guess they're called desk shields. It's a plastic shield, there's a kind of little study carol, uh, that the, the students will have. Uh, we, we bought one for every, every elementary child and all the secondary, uh, students who, who receive special education services. And there's a sixth one, Sam, that I'm hoping you remember, uh, but I'm, it's a skip. Oh, I know what it is. We, we, we hired it, we, we are hiring an additional daytime custodian to continuously clean the high-touch surfaces in, in all the restrooms, all the time that the buildings are occupied. So, Ki- Kim, in, in the interest of time, what, what we could do is we could come back at the next COW meeting and we'll talk about that tomorrow, uh, when that's going to be. But we'll come back at the next COW meeting and, and, and maybe I could have, uh, like Denise and, and Jamal and his crew dive into one part of it and Susan and her crew dive into another part of it. And Lori and Sam and Christie, we really have kind of three parts to this. That's the way we're thinking about it. So we could, we could really do, uh, a, a nice explanation to, to the board. And, uh, and as I say, the, the board, the board in no way is expected tonight, at least from the perspective of the State Board of Education, to, to, uh, to, to, to vote to approve the plan, any more so than they are. It, it's just, we want you to know the plan is there and, uh, feel free to, uh, ask questions and we will modify it a- as, as the indicators, uh, you know, as, as the health indicators become apparent.
Yeah, I think, I got to Liz, I, I think that, um, you know, we just have a lot of families who, you know, we've heard from one of our neighbors that have a plan, right? Like, and that's what's going to happen. Um, and, um, and then anyone that has, you know, tuned into any social media or, or to whatever, have all the other plans. And so my sense is, is that there's lots of families in Groton who are trying to make sort of their, their lives move forward in terms of employment and et cetera. And so, um, and, uh, so I, I just, as soon as we can, um, that makes it feasible, um, I think that, that we should have something that's, um, out there. But, um, I, um, I'll, I'll stop talking. Liz and then Andrea.
I have a couple of concerns. And, um, primarily, um, I want to go back to like the hybrid model where you say cohort A is in-person, Alpha A to M, and then cohort, um, B is Alpha N to Z. Now, um, having taught in all three levels of school, I find that this is an area that would be very difficult, especially in high school, especially when you have all the different types of classes that go in high school. And so on, my concern is, I mean, I've actually taught classes where I only had, you know, four different letters of the alphabet. So I'm very concerned about that balance. And I understand that it's all a scheduling thing. The other concern I have is that, um, and I under, you know, I know a lot of work and please don't think I'm, I'm being critical. I, because of my, my background too, I look at this and I don't know how our current, um, schedule can accommodate this. Um, especially at the middle school, high school, where they're going to eighty-five minute classes. And then we have, and then it's alternating days. You know, at this rate, it looks, it just appears that you're only going to see your kids once a, once a week.
That's right.
And, and that's, and to me, I don't know, is it even worth to go back once a week? I, I've had parents contacting me going, you know, I, this is crazy to have. We're not sure what's happening. And I say, you know, wait until you see the plan and, you know, you will have time to, to discuss it and that. But I don't, I, I'm very concerned about the, the secondary element. The mi- the elementary probably is a little easier to do these cohorts. I'm not sure. I haven't been there in a long time.
You're right.
But, um, I'm concerned about the middle school and the high school. And I was wondering too, have we considered, instead of doing block scheduling, is to maybe alter the schedule, um, for this year? To go to a seven-period rotation, which is very difficult, but at least then you would see your kids twice a week, which, you know, would be a little bit easier in that respect to have your kids with you in the class. Having taught in both models, you know, they both have their benefits. That's one of my major concerns. The other concern I had was, um, if you look on, um, on page four of the, of the document, you're talking about cleaning of facilities and daily operations. And it says, once staff and students, at the very bottom of the page, students have vacated the room, ventilated well, and, once students have vacated the room, ventilate well before entering and cleaning. Well, we have physical spaces that don't have windows that open beyond three inches. That's not possible. The high school windows don't open that far. You also have is now who's going to be responsible for cleaning in between each of these periods? Are you telling the classroom teacher that they're going to have to wash all the desks and all the spaces? I mean, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not critical. I'm just want, is, I'm, I'm sure you've thought a bit of these things, but it's not coming through on the document. And so I'm just voicing a little bit of concern. Um, I just feel like this would, I can see where this is going to work in, um, especially in elementary situation, possibly the middle school. But I think it's going to be very hard to implement in the high school, very hard. And that's just, my very big concern is I, I look at those, these kids. Um, there's one other thing with, um, I was wondering, you know, when you talk about distance learning, are we preparing our teachers to have, are we, as part of their PD, is it going to be part of how to prepare? And, um, these instant, these Zoom lessons or online lessons? Have we considered another, um, platform such as Google, what is it called? Um, Google Meet? I was talking to a couple of high school teachers from a different district and they actually had Google Meet and they had in live classes with their high school students using Google Meet where they could actually have the interaction on a regular basis. And Zoom is very limiting where we've had the Google Meet, they had great success with it. Um, final comment, districts around the, um, the country, from California, Illinois, Michigan, I have family and friends and all. And most of these districts are, a lot of them that I've heard from, people, they're not going back to school for the first quarter. And then they're looking at it because it's still, the COVID is still such a, a hot issue. So, um, that was, those are my comments and concerns. I did read this quite, quite thoroughly and I, I just wanted to put that out there. Okay, I don't expect an answer. I just wanted you to hear me.
Thank you, um, Liz. I just want to, um, Dr. Grenier, is this the best format for us to have the, these discussions about the plan?
No, I, I would, I would, like I say, I think we need to break it up, uh, over a, a period of, uh, you know, and maybe Kim and I, by the way, everyone, uh, talked about having a, a meeting next Monday night. We, we might want to institute that, Kim, and, and, and start to march our way through so that the, the third, the tenth, and the seventeenth, we would be able to have the law, you know, the, the majority of this and especially to bring in some of the writers, uh, that, that would be, uh, I think that would really be helpful.
Yeah, no, Liz, because your, your comments were, were, um, very thoughtful. And I'm sure that every single one of us would have very thoughtful questions. I just don't know if this is the, if this is the form that we have that and what is the best way of having this form specifically when we just don't know? Um, I, that's, that's my thought. I, I think that, um, if Mike and I can get together tomorrow and kind of go over our agenda for, um, the possibility of, of, of doing a meeting. I know, Jay, that you have a finance and facilities meeting. Um, and so maybe we can try to work, work around that. But if, if there's a way that we could, um, continue to have our, our conversations. Liz, I, I, I would hope that you would forward your thoughts specifically about the secondary, um, education. Once again, that's out of my league. Um, and, I mean, there's so many other parts. I mean, I just sort of felt like what you had to present to the state was like, this is an idea of a house plan. Like, I don't have all the specifics of what's in the house, but this is a house plan. Um, and that, um, we're talking now about all the specifics, like, you know, where's the rafter, where's the whatever? And eventually we're going to have to get down to what's the curtains, right? Um, but, but I think that that's such a, that is such a moving, um, target at the present moment. So I don't want to squelch anyone's voice around this for tonight. But I just, I, I'm just wondering if it makes sense if we kind of, um, if, if Mike and I kind of make- just wondering if it makes sense if we kind of, if Mike and I kind of make a plan about how do we kind of talk about the stuff that's moving forward? Because like Liz, all of us are getting phone calls about how we're going to open up the school and what is that going to look like? And quite frankly, the answer is, we don't know yet, right? Like, I mean, we have an idea, we have the house, right? We know if it's House A, B, or C, but then what are all the other details that kind of need to have happened in that?
So, there are a lot of details that are linked into that document. If you opened up all the links, there's probably.
Yes. Overwhelming.
Even our schools are looking at each of their school scenarios and how to follow each one of these plans in three different ways. But what would be helpful is if any of you, as you go through even the 22-page document, put together a list of questions that you could send us so that we would be able to then respond and showcase some of the work that's been done related to some of the questions that you have.
Great idea, Susan. Andrea and then Rosemary. Andrea.
This, Susan, you partially answered my question because I wanted to know, one of the big things that has come up consistently with parents has been, you know, an inconsistency among presenting curriculum. And my question is, and I'm hoping that you will include this, I want to know what we're doing with supervision and evaluation and consistency among the schools. How are we, so please put that on the list to look at. How are we going to supervise and evaluate?
Well, we do have a plan. It's called the G Plan, based on the C Plan, but I can certainly update the board on what that looks like.
I'll send you some specific questions.
Okay, that would be great.
Rosemary.
I'm curious about what are the actual time limits that we have to make some of these decisions by? And so that we can either squish as many meetings as we need to into a time period.
If I can, I can answer that. The next item on the agenda is usually influential to the answer. The State Board of Education has given the board permission to go from 180 student days to 177. And the board already has 181st day in the calendar. So, if, if the board decided, we could, we could have not only the 27th, the 28th of August and then the 31st, and then have the students start on the 1st. We could actually have those three days plus four more. We could actually begin school on the 8th of September, which would give us seven full days. And I was on Friday with several board members, I think they, Beth and members of the core team, virtually everybody said, if we could do that, that would be great. So, the answer to your question, Rosemary, is obviously, we have to make that decision. We have to tell the parents where we are. I think that's important that that gets done soon, perhaps tonight. And then, and then as we proceed, we, you know, the date that will become huge will be the Tuesday after Labor Day. We'll kind of march our way through that. But, but I would say, as I said to Kim, by the 17th of August, I'm confident we can clearly explain all the elements of the plan and actually take, you know, like some of the, some of the suggestions that we're hearing. And I heard, I heard a great deal of flexibility from the governor and the commissioner today. So, I think the hybrid model, if that is going to meet the needs of the community, that is very much in play. So, the board, I think the board needs to chew on this and this decision. I would think, Kim, we perhaps want to even have a meeting by the 17th, because I don't think we want to tell the parents on the 24th of August, surprise, surprise.
Right. I don't, I don't think so. So, what I hear is, is that, I told everyone, I got to Rita, I told everyone that we were going to become everyone's best friends and I'm not lying about that in terms of meeting a lot. So, just be prepared for that. Rita.
I really liked what Liz said about the seven-period day at the high school. I hadn't thought about that, but that really makes a lot of sense to me. I also think that we should have a whole COW devoted to this next Monday night or whenever you want to have it. I think it's very important that we have it very soon and that's all we talk about is what we're going to do, what the plan's going to look like, and then vote on it the next week. I think even waiting to August 17th is too late for parents to make a decision about whether or not they're going to just keep their children out totally, have their children to go, you know, part of the time. So, I mean, there are parents that, you know, are getting pods together so that they can educate their children in small groups at, you know, someone's home. I mean, there's a lot to think about and waiting is not a good idea. So, I think we should do this very soon.
Rita, that's absolutely been the plan and I didn't, I knew that this was going to be a heavy hitter meeting, but I just wanted to at least begin to have a taste about sort of what that plan looked like because we haven't even talked about it since, even before it was submitted. So.
Right. And I have one more thing. I understand about this, the teachers would like the seven days front-loaded. I don't understand how later in the agenda you have those days as half-days. If it is so important to have those days from September, I believe, 1st to 4th, to me, they should be full days and the teachers really, really need to work on virtual plans if they have nothing, you know, there's a lot that they are going to have to do. But I, and I also don't know why we can't still have 180 days, even if we start on September 8th, you just have the school year go a little longer. Hopefully, we will not have snow days. I mean, snow days could be virtual days.
If you do, if you do that, you have to pay the teachers a whole lot more because the teachers would work for them, not 186 days, but they, they'd work for 190 days.
Well, then maybe we don't do the three days, you know, the days before and just do it September 1st to the 4th. Because I, you know, as it is now, the children are not getting the education they deserve. So, you know, you have to balance that. I don't want children to lose more teacher contact time. So, that's my feeling. Especially when, when I saw that you were having half-days on those days, it was like, wait a minute, you know, why do we have these seven days if four of them are maybe half-days?
Wait, 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 time out. We've moved on to the next agenda topic. I want to make sure that the board is aware that we've moved on to the agenda topic. We've moved on to the next agenda plates.
Right.
Gretchen, are you still on the plan?
I was going to back Liz's ideas up to the.
Okay. So, feel free to write that as, as to Susan, to say, I back up Liz's plan. All right.
Their schedules, Liz, so we can too.
All right. So, we're going to now move on to, sorry, Mike. I now, Gretchen, do you have more topic, more, more to talk about on the agenda of the plan?
Are we on the number of school days?
We jumped there without finishing the last one, so I just am trying to make sure that we are.
So, do you actually have something to say on that?
Okay. So, we are now moving on to that. Someone has their microphone on and when you move papers, it actually overcomes the rest of the conversation. So, I'm not quite sure who that is, but if you're not planning to talk, if you could just throw it on mute, that is just a very helpful process. Dr. Grenier, I'm going to recognize, and then Gretchen, I'm going to ask for you to, with your question.
We've already, we've already essentially said it, that the State Board of Education has said that you can reduce the number of school days. And when I, when I put that on the agenda for action, I didn't know that the school board had changed it. So, I was thinking half-days, but I'm, of course, I'm not saying that any longer, which is why we're working, as Susan and I say, we're building the plane while we fly it.
All right. Gretchen, I'm going to recognize you for questions about the school days.
Okay. I know that the universities are changing up their school year. The University of Wyoming, Jake's going in first September, coming home at Thanksgiving, and then he's not going back until January. And then they're going to do something similar to condense the spring semester so that kids aren't coming and going and coming and going and bringing things from Hawaii, you know, their spring break, help back, that sort of thing. So, we could condense possibly the school year, but I know we, the unions that Beth may have words to say about that idea.
Actually, the State Board of Ed says you must have 177 days.
Hopefully, we make it.
Yeah, well, well, we'll make it one way or the other. We'll make it remotely or we'll make it in person, but.
How we could condense the school year differently, possibly?
Yeah, I don't think we have the authority to do that.
Probably not.
All right. So, the conversation is then, it's not half-days, it's going to be full days because that's the new information that we got. Is that correct, Dr. Grenier?
Yes.
So, when we have the vote later on in the meeting, that's what the vote is, that we will, that we will change, the motion will then read that the third, the first three days. All right. Is there any question about why or about having that happen? Rita. Rita, you're on mute. Are we striking number nine then, under new business? Okay, can we, that's related to the school days. That's the vote.
The answer is, we'll modify it.
We're going to modify it.
Can I just add a point of clarification on why those days are so important upfront? And maybe Beth would like to add on to that because we're in total agreement. With the teachers coming back, there is a lot of safety protocol that we have to review. There's a lot of curriculum work that's been done for reentry that needs to be looked at. And for the first eight weeks, we've made adjustments, we've compacted and accelerated some things. And then there's this whole distance learning that we have to make sure with some new technologies. So, those three ingredients, never mind that, by the way, we have this new Groton Middle School and we've got teachers moving into a new middle school. So, there's a lot on our plate and Mike has said this much more eloquently than I can say it, but anxiety is high and trust gets low. So, we're trying to balance this with this hybrid method and by starting slow and growing so that we reduce anxiety and we build trust with all our constituents. And we feel like this is really the best way to do it. I don't know if Beth can also follow up because she has the teacher's ear all the time on this and hears from them directly, as I do, so.
The, Susan's correct. And the other piece of this is, the state has asked that those three, those three days that we're reducing down to the 177 student contact, the three days be used for COVID training. So, the COVID training does include the platforms, distance learning training, hybrid training. It also includes the policies and the procedures where if students are eating in the classrooms, we have to have allergen training. We might need to have hymn training. There's a whole bunch of level of training that is addressed throughout the plan when you click on all those links, but there needs to be time to do that in addition to all of the normal stuff that we are doing at the beginning of the year. So, those days are extremely important. We might even be able, towards the end of those seven days, bring in the smaller cohorts of students to run through procedures so they can see it before they have to do it right away. So, those seven front-loaded days are absolutely essential for all of our teachers and our middle school teachers especially, they're trying to get used to a new space. You know, the rest of us, we kind of know our buildings and we know, okay, if we're going one way in the hallway, we know which way to go, but they got to work all of that out in a brand-new building too.
Thank you, Beth.
And there's a lot of curriculum adjustments that we have to go through and understand at all levels, K, pre-K through 12.
Liz?
Beth, I have a question for you. I know in our, in the contracts, there's nothing, I don't think there's any things about duties, but we're now going to have to have duties. Is this going to become a sticking point?
So, this is something that we have a proposed MOU that we will be discussing with the negotiations, and that's one of the things we have to talk about. Duties are addressed in the contract in a couple of different places and what they look like. You've got to remember that elementary in particular, it gets a little tricky because our planned time is attached to that lunchtime and lunches are always duty-free. So, there's a lot of things that, you know, we need to get down to that minutia, which is now forthcoming. So, there's a lot of things to discuss to write an MOU because of the impacts to the workday.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that with you.
Oh, yeah. No, we got it.
Thank you.
That's a good introduction, Beth, because those of us who are on negotiation committee just want to let you know that we will be having a meeting soon to be discussing those things that are on, that are on our docket. Any other questions or concerns or thoughts about, this is going to be for an upcoming vote hopefully in a little bit? Rosemary?
We're not having a policy meeting in the first, the beginning of August, so maybe we could shoehorn a, an extra meeting in there, so.
So, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Rosemary. Lee?
We are canceling the first policy. We are probably going to find another one for the middle of August.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's because somebody couldn't make it.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
Kim, I did a little, I look forward and I have a proposal. And, you know, we, so anyway, here's my proposal. We could, I think, tell me if I'm wrong, Susan, we could table the old business for tonight. And I have, there needs, there should be a vote on Cutler and Westside, giving them back to the town because they're going to be knocked down tomorrow and it would be good if the board doesn't own them anymore. And then I would say, 3, 4, and 5, we table. It would be nice if we had the vote on 6 and 7. Those are two personnel things we need to get moving on. The plan, I mean, I would defer to what you said, Jay. There's no real reason, we can get through the plan and maybe vote on it on the 10th, but I do think, number nine, I changed it to, and I'll tell you when we get there. So, my proposal was we go new business only, 1, 2, 6, 7, 8, and then a new 9.
That's actually, Mike, that's actually what I was just about ready to propose in terms of kind of taking a look at that. But I, my concern was, do those policies have to be voted on tonight, like this, the old one, second meeting? Okay.
No, they can be voted on next month.
Right. So, people, when we take a look at the committee meetings, are you comfortable with the fact that we're just going to move that to the following, the following time period? So, I'm thinking that it's 100% yes on that stuff. And I would like to, once again, reiterate what I think is being proposed for the remainder of the meeting, and that is on our new business page, we are going to do number 1 and 2, which is the Westside and the Cutler. We are then going to have a motion for the two personnel, which were two that were, that we had talked about in the committee before, and that we are then going to then use the motion for the 177 school days. Am I, are we, are we in agreement to all of that?
I just want to know, we should remove the action items then accept the minutes.
Oh, you, did Joan get to you?
No.
But that's a very, actually, that's a really good point and you are now the favored one of Ms. Joan. But I think that Rita does have a, actually, the legitimacy to accept those, the agenda topic. So, please go to the second page where it says action items. And I will take a motion for acceptance of the consent. And I will take a motion for acceptance of the consent agenda and its approval of multiple different special meetings. And I will entertain a second to that, to the motion. I see Liz. Is there a question?
Oh, I'll second.
Lee, do you have a question? No? Lee, is there a discussion? You had your hand up.
No, no, I was going to second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. There just, there's a lot of people that gave us a lot of donations, and I'll make sure that that gets said.
We'll write a note, Kim.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We're now moving on to new items of business, which is motion to transfer the Carl Cutler Middle School located at 160 Fishtown Road, Visiting Connecticut, to the Town of Grotton, effective by 28th, 2020. Can I take a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
I got Rita, is there any discussion?
Kind of a moot point, isn't it, Kim?
Doing the job, all right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to transfer the Carl Cutler Middle School located at 160 Fishtown Road, Visiting Connecticut, to the Town of Grotton, effective July 28th, 2020, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, the motion has carried. Now going to motion to transfer the Westside Middle School located at 250 Brandykey Avenue, Grotton, Connecticut, to the Town of Grotton, effective July 28th, 2020. Can I have a second to that motion? I see Lee.
Second.
Yes.
She has seconded that, do I have a discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of transferring Westside Middle School located at 250 Brandykey Avenue, Grotton, Connecticut, to the Town of Grotton, effective July 28th, 2020, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. I'm moving us down to number six. Discussion and possible to approve the addition of one full-time special education teacher to support both the Apex Academy and the Transition Academy programs. Can I have a second to that, please?
Second.
I'm going to do Rosemary.
Okay.
Have it, do we have a second? I mean, do we have a discussion on this? Once again, remember, we spent some time talking about this in our Committee of the Whole. Liz?
Just clarification, is this one person going to be responsible for both the Apex and the Transition, as it reads? Just to make sure I'm reading that correctly.
One person, correct.
One person, thank you. I'm getting tired.
Great note, great clarification, thank you. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion, which is to approve the addition of one full-time special education teacher to support both the Apex Academy and the Transition Academy programs, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the motion has carried. Moving us on to the seventh, which is the motion to approve the establishment of a full-time student data manager. Can I have a second to that?
Second.
I've got Jane.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Once again, this was something that we talked a lot about in terms of why we needed this in our Committee of the Whole. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to establish a full-time student data manager position, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, what's, opposed or not? Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried full. All right. So we are now on number nine, which is to discuss and possible action regarding modifications to the 2021 school calendar to change the calendar indicating that September 1st through September 4th will be early release days.
I have a new motion.
All right, that's why it was a discussion.
Joan, here's what I'm saying. To modify the 2021 school calendar to indicate that September 8th will be the first day of school for students, and the school calendar will consist of 177 student days.
Can I have a second? There's now a motion on the floor.
Second.
Discussion.
Why can't it be 178 days? I'm just curious. If there's 181 days that the teachers, is it, the teachers are 186 days according to their contract?
That's right. So the 186, and then we have, we have a PD day on Election Day, and we have a PD day in March, so that's 184.
You know, I know Larn's not going to have that PD day in March. So.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need those. I don't know.
Well, if we didn't have that, the board could change that to a student day. I think the, I think the real emphasis here is to try to give us time upfront to, everything from students coming in to meet their teacher, there might be a, one of the, one of the seven days might be allocated to teachers having students come in in small groups just to meet the teacher, that sort of thing. Having the seven, it just falls so nicely. And then the board goes back to the calendar, which is somewhat ironic, of starting on the eighth of September. But Rita, the board, the board can add those, change the PD days to student days if...
Can I just intervene? We already really have a social justice lawyer on diversity coming in on March. He's been planned for over a year. And so he really goes along with some of the work that we're doing. And in November, we're starting to plan. We feel like those two goalposts, in the beginning of the year and the end, are good recalibration for our teachers to have that level of professional learning, especially since we might be, we might be doing all three plans in one year, depending on how this COVID virus goes. So it's, you know, even if we adopted a hybrid plan in the beginning, doesn't mean that's going to be for the whole year. You know, God willing, it's only for a certain amount of time, and then we can bring more kids back, you know? But I do think that having those two professional learning days for our staff are so important now more than ever before to just take a breath and be able to make sure that our plans are working and the way we want them to. So I would, you know, really recommend that we keep those, at least at this point. I think they're important.
Gretchen?
On a personal note, in December, I mean, winter of '77, '78, we had nowhere near 170 school days. They just kind of, we're done. So that did not hurt the educational outcome for those students. And most recent research says that it's most important that students have continuity and that the teachers be prepared. It has, is far more important than the number of days they spend with the teacher. Outcome is directly related to preparedness of the teacher, the calmness of the teacher, the happiness of the teacher, and the consistency, you know, not the consistency of the child, but they are what they are. They're crunchy or squishy.
So we agree with you.
So, so what I, what I hear, what I hear, what's on the table is that to move September 8th, it allows the teachers to really kind of front-load a lot of stuff that needs to happen that is just so unusual because of the pandemic. But that we're still recommending that the teachers need to still continue to have professional development, specifically since we already had someone already scheduled for the March date. Is that sort of what I hear on the table?
Right. That's exactly right.
Rita, could we have, could we have this motion where it's just that the children are starting school on September 8th, the teachers are coming back for those seven days, and then not say how many school days the children will be attending?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we don't need to say they are only coming 177 days yet.
The big, the big thing is, I'm nervous, I just, I want to get it out to the parents that we're going to start after Labor Day.
Yeah, I think it's great.
The teachers will start on the 27th of August, and the children will start on the 8th. That gives us seven days to get ready. Yeah, so, so the...
So Rita, are you proposing an amendment to the motion?
To Mike's motion?
Yes. Yes.
I'm striking the second sentence of it. It would say, the amended motion would be to modify the school calendar to indicate that September 8th will be the first day of school for students.
Yes. I mean, to me, that's the most important, what we need to get out to everybody.
Is there, so, Ms. Joan, I don't know if you can unmute. I just want to make sure that I am doing this correctly. So there's an amendment, there's amendment to the motion. Do I have to have a second on the amendment?
Joan doesn't have a microphone on her computer.
I would, I would definitely say yes, Kim. And then vote on the amended motion first.
Okay, so can I have a second to the amendment? Which is, Dr. Grenier, can you please read that one more time so we know what we're voting on?
To modify the 2021 school calendar to indicate that September 8th will be the first day of school for students.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
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 All right, I got, I got Lee. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, which was just read by Mike, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the amendment has carried. Now, do I need to go back to the first? No, because then...
Because it's obsolete now. Because the first, you can't have the first and the second.
Okay. All right. Andrea?
Motion to adjourn.
God bless you. Second.
I've never seen so many seconds.
Oh, my God. Followed up with, praise the Lord.
Even Mark, even Mark seconded that one.
Frankly, guys, if you think about it, in the past three hours, we actually got a hell of a lot. We did a lot of work, and we had a lot of good conversations. So this is really big stuff, and I really appreciate people's flexibility and time. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, see you tomorrow.
Bye, everybody.
Say well.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Right now.